Good afternoon. Welcome, everyone, to City Council today. It is February the 28th and it is 1:30. And at this time, City Council will hold an executive session for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding the following: Pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement and to hold consultation with attorney under Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code; Personnel matters under Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code; and competitive matters of the public power utilities under Section 551.086 of the Texas Government Code. We anticipate this will take around 30 minutes, maybe a little longer. And as we come back in, we will begin with our regular agenda. We are in recess. Good afternoon again. We are back from executive session. It is now 2:05. Thank you for your patience. We had a state-of-the-city address for lunch, and so it's definitely a full, full day. Thank you all for being here. At this time, we will move into our ceremonial items, and we will stand for the invocation that will be led by Pastor James Taylor with Red Bud Baptist Church, and if you will remain standing for our pledges by Mayor Pro Tem Patterson Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we give you thanks and praise for your mighty works. You are loving, you are good, you are gracious. Thank you for creating us and sustaining us every day. Thank you that you made us in your image to exist in community with you and with each other. We thank you for the city of Lubbock. Thank you for the elected officials, the businesses, the medical facilities, the churches, the families, and the individuals that make this city great. Lord, thank you for the grace that you give us in your Son Jesus. Forgive us and give us the hearts of obedience to your word, Lord. We pray for a city that no matter how diverse we are, that we live together in peace and hope, a city of happy homes, a city that has strong families, a city that welcomes the stranger, and a city who cares for those in need, a city that defends the innocent with those who intend evil. Lord, thank you for the government that we have in our place. Those who you put in leadership positions, I pray their civil servants would acknowledge their calling to form it faithfully. I pray for this council meeting this afternoon. I pray for the council members' wisdom. Give them the wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the items before them today. May every decision be righteous in your sight for the benefits of you and your glory. For it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Do you want a pledge to the United States flag and to the Texas flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the United States flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated.
All right, next, we will move to Agenda Item 3, which is Citizen Comments. And this afternoon, we have one. Citizen comments are a time for any citizen wishing to appear in person before a regular meeting of the City Council regarding any matter that's posted, and they will complete a sign-up form provided at the meeting, and then they are able to come forward. You'll have three minutes to discuss or make a comment on any posted item. Just for all of you here that have intention of speaking at the public hearing, this is not the public hearing under 6.3 or other items. That will come after our consent agenda. So at this time, I will recognize Mr. William Tortorelli. I apologize if I've got that wrong. Mr. Tortorelli, if you come forward, if you'd please state your name and your address. And again, you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, William Tortorelli, 3319 29th Street. And I would like to say one thing to clear up the record regarding Agenda Item 6.3, which is that at the February 2nd Planning and Zoning Meeting, Mr. Sneed said that the project had the support of the Texas Tech Administration, which is simply not true. The TTU Administration has maintained silence on this matter. But it might help you to know that I've spoken with three department chairs who have all confirmed that the neighborhood of tech terrace is an important recruiting tool for faculty, that in fact, they do real estate tours of tech terrace whenever they have applicants, candidates interviewing for jobs. And I thought that the presence of a neighborhood adjacent to tech like this is just important enough to defend because of the great schools there. We don't want those faculty members to go to UT or A&amp;M, really. So...
Was that intentional?
Never, never. It's the lights. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. All right, next, we will move to Agenda Item 4, which is our minutes. And 4.1 has January 17th of 2023, special City Council meeting with EUB. January 25th of 2023, which is LITA. And then February 13th, the EUB Special City Council meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve. Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. Thank you, Ms. Joy. A motion and second, all in favor of approval of 4.1, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0. All right, council will next take up the consent agenda, which is Items 5.1 through 5.23. There are no pulls this week from the consent agenda. As such, is there a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 5.1 through 5.23? Thank you, Mr. Madison Gill, Ms. Joy. All in favor of approval of Consent Agenda Items 5.1 through 5.23, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign? I didn't hear any. Motion carries on the consent agenda, 7-0. Moving right along. We will now begin our public hearings. And the first we have is 6.1. All right, the purpose of a public hearing is to hear from the applicant and members of the public. The council may ask questions of the applicant or staff, we have Ms. Sager here, during the public hearing, but no discussion will be had by council during the public hearing. Begin with Ms. Sager on Agenda Item 6.1.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 6.1 is Zone Case 809-B. The applicant is AMD Engineering LLC for Shanghai Development Company LLC. The purpose is to rezone a property from General Retail District C3, reduce setback Single Family District R1A, and Industrial Park District IDP to High Density Apartment District A2. We sent out three notifications, receiving no responses. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. It is located just east of University Avenue, south of Kent Street. The current zoning, as stated, is C3, R1A, and IDP. There is additional R1 and R1A property, as well as additional IDP surrounding it. Future land use plan designates this property for low-density residential land uses. Here is a graphic provided by the applicant showing the 11.79 acre tract of land proposed for the rezone. And here are some renderings provided by the applicant to show the proposal for the project, as well as some site plans and floor plans. These are photos provided by the applicant from other projects. And these are photos of the existing site today, which is currently vacant. Even though the future land use map designates this property for low-density residential land uses, the zoning of A2 is appropriate in this location adjacent to a major thoroughfare. The zone changes in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. It is along North University Avenue, which is a principal arterial. Staff recommended approval of the request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sager. Does anyone have any questions this time for Ms. Sager? We'll probably keep you close.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sager. All right, this time, we will open up the public hearing for Agenda Item 6.1. If there is anyone wishing to speak in opposition of Agenda Item 6.1, you may approach now. All right, seeing none, I will now ask if anyone wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Item 6.1, you may step forward now. All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. As to Agenda Item 6.1, is there a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.1? Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. I think that's a second from Ms. Martinez Garcia. All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 6.1, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign? Our motion carries 7-0. All right, we will now move to Agenda Item 6.2. Ms. Sager.
Agenda Item 6.2 is Zone Case 3145-J. The applicant is SK Architecture Group for Shift Automotive. The purpose is to rezone a property from CB2 to CB3. We sent out 10 notifications and did not receive any responses. This property is located south of 19th Street, east of Avenue K. Here's an aerial view of the subject property, surrounded by other commercial uses. Current zoning is CB2. There is CB3 immediately to the west, additional CB2 to the north and east, and a mix of residential and commercial zoning to the south. The future land use plan designates this property for commercial land uses. And here are some photos of the existing property, which is currently, has buildings on it, but they are vacant. The future land use map designates this property for commercial uses, so the proposed zone change to CB3 would be in conformance. The zone changes in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area and uses. The rezoning is along 19th Street, which is a minor arterial, and Avenue K, which is a collector. Staff recommended approval, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions, Ms. Sager, on 6.2? All right, thank you, Ms. Sager.
Thank you.
All right, I will now open the public hearing as to Agenda Item 6.2. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition of 6.2, you may step forward now. All right, seeing none, I will now ask if anyone wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Item 6.2, please step forward. All right, seeing none, I will now close the public hearing as to 6.2. I would entertain a motion to approve 6.2. Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Any other discussion or comments on 6.2? All right, all in favor... Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Joy. Ms. Joy.
Just have this comment. It was approved by Planning and Zoning. It doesn't mean it gets by us as a yes or no, but if you have a case on the agenda, it would really be helpful if you'd be present to give us your feelings on it. And then, if we should have any questions, then we don't have anybody to ask questions of. So just for future reference, you have a case on the agenda, at least the proponent needs to be present, in my opinion. I don't think that looks very well for the project.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. I think we've stated that before. Probably a good idea for those, again, future reference. Because I anticipate that 6.3 will be a longer public hearing than the other ones we have of council's approval, I would go ahead and ask to move to 6.4, and go ahead and get that one out of the way, and then we can move to 6.3. I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Joy. All right, anybody else want to come up here and run this? It's probably... Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, it's been a long morning. All right, all in favor of approval of 6.2, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign? All right, thank you all for the reminder. 6.2 carries 7-0. Now, with that said, I will move to Agenda Item 6.4. Ms. Sager, we're going to go ahead and jump to that one.
Sure. Item 6... Item 6.4 is Zone Case 2538FF. The applicant is Mr. and Ms. Rodriguez, and their request is to rezone the property from Single Family District R1 to Commercial District C4. We sent out 11 notifications, receiving three responses in favor and none in opposition. Here's the notification map. It looks a little misleading. The third property is here to the east of this line. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. It is along 19th Street, adjacent to many other commercial uses. And this area has a mix of R1 and C4 zoning, due to the fact that this stretch of 19th was annexed in as R1, and then over the years, properties that already had commercial uses have come in and requested zone changes to C4. Future land use map designates this property for low-density residential land uses. Here are some photos of the subject property and adjacent area. There is an existing commercial business on the property. The future land use map designates the area for low-density residential uses, but given the adjacent zoning and the location along a major thoroughfare, the C4 zoning is appropriate. The requested zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. 19th Street is designated as a principal arterial. Staff recommends approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Ms. Patterson Harris.
Did I hear you correctly that... And I didn't turn, I'm having trouble with my little tabby thing going through the information in the booklet. It says future land use indicates that this should be used for low-density?
It does. That is correct. But given the existing C4 zoning around this property and the existing uses that were in place at the time of annexation, the request to C4 is appropriate.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure how I was hearing things.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson Harris. Ms. Joy.
Yes, Ms. Sager, this is one of those cases where we annex some property that already had existing uses.
Yes.
Not zoning. We don't zone outside the city of Lubbock. And so, we had some uses that were commercial when we took it in, and they stay. This use that is in this particular place that didn't conform, and this is really kind of one of those where you come in and say, "Sorry, I've got an existing use in a district in which it's not allowed."
Exactly.
Kind of call them cleanups, and it's a cleanup only because it does, in fact, have C4 all around.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Ms. Sager, you also indicated there is, in existence, a commercial business on this property.
Yes, that's correct.
Would this also be a good time, since we have many residents around the 19th Street area, east of this, to remind them that that is a state highway and has no... Construction has no bearing on the city of Lubbock?
That is correct.
All right, just another reminder. Any other questions, Ms. Sager? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
This time, I will open up the public hearing on Agenda Item 6.4. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of 6.4, you may step forward now. All right, seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in favor of 6.4, you may step forward now. If you'd just state your name and your address, and thank you for coming.
Hello, Roseanne Rodriguez. I am the owner of the property at 7425 West 19th Street. This property has been in our family for over 20 years. It has been commercial. We were only made aware that it was districted as R1 last year when our longtime friend and neighbor, Kip, got it redistricted. So, we have no intention to change the usage of that land, so we just hope you guys approve it.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. All right, any further questions? Does anyone have any questions, Ms. Rodriguez, as the proponent? All right, I would entertain a motion to approve 6.4. Thank you, Ms. Joy. Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. Any further discussion on 6.4? All right, all in favor of approval of 6.4, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign? 6.4 carries Ms. Rodriguez, 7-0. All right, now we will move back to Agenda Item... And Ms. Rodriguez, you are welcome to stay, but you all are also welcome to go if you choose. We will now move to 6.3, and I will turn it over to Ms. Sager.
Thank you. Item 6.3 is Zone Case 3471-C. The applicant is Generator 1 LLC. Request for a zone change from Commercial District C4-specific use, Commercial District C4, Local Retail District C2-specific use, Multifamily District R3, and Single Family District R1, to Commercial Apartment District CA and Family Apartment District A1 with a planned development. There are 36 properties within the notification boundary. We received 175 responses in favor, 166 of which were from outside the notification boundary, 69 responses in opposition, 52 of which were from outside the notification boundary. This property is located south of 19th Street, west of University Avenue. Just to give a timeline of events for the requested zone changes on this property, the original case 3471 was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission on September 1st of 2022. That request was to rezone the property to Central Business District CB2. That case was postponed and later withdrawn by the applicant. Case 3471-A was placed on the October 6, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission Agenda. That was a request to rezone the property to CA with a planned development, but the applicant withdrew the request prior to the meeting. Case 3471-B was placed on the November 3, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission Agenda. The commission heard a request to rezone the property to CA with a PD and recommended denial by a vote of 3 to 6. Case 3471-C was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission February 2, 2023 to rezone the property to Family Apartment District A1 and Commercial Apartment District CA with a planned development, and the commission recommended approval by a vote of 6 to 2. Here's the notification map, showing the responses we have received in favor and in opposition within the notification boundary. The... There is legislature and state law governing the opposition received within the notification boundary. So if we receive written protest by owners of property within the 200-foot notification boundary, excluding the land area of the subject properties, and that area of those in opposition equals 20% or more of the land area inside the notification boundary, then it triggers a supermajority vote, six out of seven votes, from City Council in order to be approved. This is what we have today. The total land area inside the boundary, including the subject properties, 645,613. Total land area of the subject properties, 150,429 square feet. The land... Subtract the two numbers, 495,184 square feet. The total land area of opposition, 127,177 square feet, equaling 25.68%. So it will require six out of seven votes from council to be approved. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. There are existing commercial buildings on the property facing 19th Street and a parking lot on the property facing 20th. Texas Tech University is to the north. There is a hotel to the east, an apartment complex to the west, and residences to the south. Current zoning is a mix of C4, C4-specific use, R3, C2-specific use, and R1. There is apartment medical to the east, additional multifamily zoning to the west, single family to the north and south. Future land use plan designates this property for commercial and low-density land uses. Here are some photos of the subject property on 19th Street and on 20th. These are graphics provided by the applicant. This is enrollment for Texas Tech University as of fall of 2022 and their projected growth and change. Distribution of total enrollment from Texas by county. Additional numbers from other counties. And additional enrollment numbers. Current zoning, again, is the mix of commercial and residential. This is a survey showing the properties under consideration for the zone change. This is the existing street view on 20th and the proposed street view on 20th Street. Existing street view on 19th and proposed. The former plan presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a single apartment building that was three stories on 20th versus the new plan for seven detached two-story Former plan for 19th Street and the new plan showing an increased front setback and preserving and extending the existing wall. Here are some graphics showing the type of amenities proposed. The former plan showing a commercial apartment for both sides, 19th and 20th, with the new plan showing these commercial apartment on 19th, A1 with the seven detached residences on 20th. This is a concept plan for the first floor. Concept plan for a typical floor. The project summary for 19th Street with the CA with the planned development. And 20th Street for the A1 with the planned development. The summary of the project access and utilities. Proposed deviations from the CA zoning for the property on 19th Street. The front yard is required to be 43 feet or no less than the average setback established by the development on the adjacent lots. The front setback for the apartment complex to the west is at 20 feet, for the hotel to the east is at 30. So they are required a 25-foot front setback. They are proposing 20, so a five-foot deviation. Here's the graphic provided by the applicant showing the existing setbacks within the area, both front, side, and rear for adjacent buildings. Additional deviations from CA zoning. The rear yard is required to be one foot for each one foot of total height, only where you are adjacent to RR, R1, R1A, or R2 property. Only a portion of the subject property on 19th will be adjacent to R1 property, the four lots outlined in yellow. So, adjacent to those four lots, they are required a 60-foot rear setback, proposing 10-foot, which is a deviation of 50. Of those four properties, the property at 2602 replied in favor, the property at 2608 replied in opposition, 2606 and 2610 did not respond. There are more than 60 permitted uses by right in the C4 district that fronts onto 19th. They are all listed here. I say they are more than 60 because the very first one includes everything allowed in C2A, C2, and C3. Some of the other allowed uses, there are several automotive uses, brew pub, furniture store, garden center, lumberyard, office warehouse, rental store, second-hand goods store, pawn shop, et cetera. Proposed deviations from the A1 zoning is the side yard. When property abets RR, R1, R1A, or R2, the minimum side yard for a two-story structure is required to be 50 feet. So they are required 50 feet on either end of this proposed tract of land. They are proposing 10-foot, which is a deviation of 40. There are more than 28 permitted uses by right in the C2 district that is currently on 20th Street. This includes a bank, a barber shop, a florist shop, smoke shop, package store, sports grill, et cetera. In 1956, the zoning board of adjustment approved special exception case E0062 on the property zoned R1 on 20th Street to allow parking for a business. This allows a business developed on the adjacent C2 property to have their required parking on the R1 property. In 1993, the City Council rezoned the C2 property to C2-specific use with the following conditions: that all unconditionally permitted C2 uses be allowed, and three additional uses for dinner theater, staff living quarters, and visiting artist's living quarters. Here are parking calculations for the project. Both the 19th and 20th Street are exceeding the required parking. 19th is exceeding it by 52 spaces. 20th is exceeding it by 17. Here's a density comparison to other apartment projects. This shows their site area in acres, number of dwelling units, dwelling units per acre. This proposed project is at 65.6 dwelling units per acre. You can see other ones. Uoffice apartment are at 108.7. Carlton House is at 86.7. This is density studies provided by the applicant. And a photo of the existing wall and trees along 19th Street that will be preserved. Here's a concept showing the future view on 19th. You can see the tree preservation as well as the wall. Additional photos showing renderings of characteristics from the existing buildings that they look to preserve. This is something new that was not shown at the Planning and Zoning Commission, showing how they are going to protect and preserve that entranceway into the patio. An additional rendering showing characteristics of the patio. And a pedestrian level view of 19th Street. And a pedestrian level view of 19th Street. With another view of 19th. These are materials proposed to be used on the building. This is the previous design for 20th Street, the three-story, single apartment building. And the new design with the seven detached residences. I will note, the tract of land on 20th Street is large enough that if it were to be rezoned R1, it could be replatted into seven lots, and these two-story residences could be built without any type of deviation required. Here's the elevation view of the proposed homes. Here is information from the traffic study provided by Kim Lee Horn. I'll let the applicant answer any questions you may have about this. This graphic just shows the number of vehicle trips from other apartments in the area compared to those of the proposed project. This is accident data provided by the Lubbock Police Department. We looked at a five-year period from January 1st of 2018 through December 31st, 2022. We but, looked at both the university as well as 19th, so there were 12 crashes that involved pedestrians on University Avenue from 19th Street to Marsha Sharp Freeway. 386 total crashes on University between Marsha Sharp and 19th. One crash resulting in a fatality in the five-year period at the intersection of University and Marsha Sharp between two vehicles. One crash that involved a pedestrian on 19th between University and Boston. 146 crashes total on 19th between University and Boston, and no fatalities in that five-year period on 19th Street. The future land use map designates the subject property on 19th for commercial land uses and the subject property on 20th for low-density residential. The zone change to CA with APD would be in conformance with the commercial designation as CA offers commercial and apartment living. Although the proposed zone change to A1 on 20th is not in conformance with the designation of low-density, the planned development will establish restrictions to the, to the design, creating units that conform in size and scale to the established homes on the street. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance. It is compatible with the surrounding area, its residences being placed next to residences. The subject property is along both 19th and 20th. 19th is a principal arterial, 20th is a local street. Staff recommended approval of the request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by a vote of 6 to 2. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sager. Does anybody have any questions for Kristen at this time? Mr. McBraer.
Kristen, could you please address the footprint of the building, the dimensions of the building on 19th Street and, and the part of that building that would be facing the alley between 19th Street and 20th Street? What is the length of that and what is the height of the building along that length?
So the height will be 60 feet. And you'll have a 10-foot setback, I believe, I'll let the applicant correct me if I'm wrong, from either side with a 20-foot setback from the front and a 10-foot setback from the rear. So other than those four dimensions, the rest will be the building, the patio, the courtyard.
So there's a 10-foot setback from the alley?
Yes.
In the building, at least about 60 feet?
60 feet, that's correct.
How long will it be along the alley? You know the dimension?
It, it'll be the entire length of the subject property minus 10 feet on either side of the east and west.
But you don't know that exact figure?
No, sir.
I read the figure, 450 feet used, does that seem?
Um, potentially, I will let the applicant address that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. McBraer. Ms. Joy?
On the alley?
Mm-hmm.
As proposed, on the west end, how do they exit the alley?
It will be onto Boston Avenue, going to the west, yes.
Going to the left? No. The question is, those to the end, on the, you're, you're gonna put people out in the alley, okay? I know what happens on the east end, it narrows, but on the west end, where do those people exit to? What street do they exit on?
Boston Avenue.
Onto Boston?
Yes.
From the alley?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. All right, thank you, Ms. Sager.
Thank you.
We'll be having you close if you have additional questions, and we also have the proponent here. But at this time, again, I'll remind Council, we'll open up the public hearing, this is a time that we will not have any discussion during the public hearing. I would remind all those speaking today, we would ask that you stay on topic, and these are actually rules that we are allowed to, to initiate in council chambers, that you stay, you stay on topic, that you avoid speaking in repetition, that is, if it's been said that we, I think we have a lot of knowledge about this, and you all know that we have a lot of knowledge, and we, we're well up to speed on what's happened. We would also encourage everyone to be courteous and not dominate the time of others that are wishing to speak. You can also have a representative to speak on your behalf if that's more beneficial. And so at this time, on Agenda Item 6.3, we will open up the public hearing. If you wish to speak in opposition, you will begin. As you step forward, please state your name and your address, and we'll open it from there.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Cindy Prattis. I have lived at 3118 20th Street for 25 years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of our City Council, for your careful consideration of this project request. I am president of the Tech Terrace Unit Neighborhood Association. University, 19th, Indiana, and 34th Streets form the boundaries of our neighborhood. If there's a silver lining to be found in this exhausting endeavor, is in the new relationships and bonds made with each other over the last several months. If you are here in support of our efforts, would you please stand now? Wow. Thank you all for your time and support, please be seated. It's incredible how much the neighborhood has come together on this. It's been said that, you know, we don't have anything better to do, I can't think of anything better to spend my time on than helping with what the neighborhood has asked of us. There were many who said they would like to be here, but other things in life got in their way, like teaching and working and so forth and so on, so they said they were here in spirit. Mr. Hardberger reached out to us before he even purchased the project, to me and several others in the neighborhood, in a, in an attempt to engage and get information to really provide us with some, some sense of what he was looking at. He invited Up Campus to make an initial presentation, which was attended by a few from our neighborhood. He arranged for Up Campus to make a presentation at the District 3 Community Forum held by Mr. McBraer. Up Campus also contacted and met with us several times to try and understand and address our concerns. Their multiple attempts to downsize the 20th Street complex is proof of their efforts. We recognize and appreciate their diligence. The heart of the matter is that high-density housing continues to be in conflict with the mission of Plan Lubbock 2040, the mission of the Planning Department, and the mission of the TT Unit Neighborhood Association to protect our neighborhood from high-density housing. The resolution you received stating our stance should be in your packet for further reference. Now, we can dispute each other's statistics, the statistics that were given to y'all, statistics that we gave to you, they don't always match. We believe ours are right, they believe theirs are correct. We can also each cherry pick articles that support our arguments. We can make statements of support from institutions, maybe such as Texas Tech, who continues to stand by their original position of neutrality. And from the very beginning, I was told by somebody from the top, we will remain neutral on this. We could be here for hours presenting those findings to you. We had extensive research, and you have all of it, I think, I think 500-plus pages of it. It's not all ours, though, the 500 pages of them. We have provided you with this background, and I want to assure those who are in attendance that our ad hoc committee members will answer questions if y'all have any from that. So in your packet, you had over 150 computer-generated petitions in favor of the zone change that likely came from outside our neighborhood. Some in favor wrote arguments as to why this is a good idea, but they're also from outside of our neighborhood. The vast majority of the protests were accompanied by heartfelt emotional pleas to the city to do the right thing and keep in the nature of our community intact by not allowing a high-density apartment complex to be inserted into our neighborhood. The developer believes that the 20% protest rule, which forces a supermajority, infringes upon his due process. Okay, then let's look at the property owners who responded instead. Of the 15 responses, which do not include the subject properties, 13 were against and only two favored the zone change. So that's different from a 20%. It's been stated that we have a "not in my backyard" mentality. I can't agree more. Not in Tech Terrace, Heart of Lubbock, Lakewood, Chapman Hill, Arnett Benson, Rush, Parkway, I could go on and on. I do believe that your own neighbors would rally as well with this project going in your backyard if it didn't fit. There are places where this project would have no impact on an existing neighborhood. In fact, you just passed the first reading for one on North University. The belief that TT Unit is anti-development does not ring true. The Staybridge Hotel remains a good example of a development that met with little opposition. There may always be positions by some that the historical structure should not be torn down. It really is not our place to say what should be developed on these lots. Instead, we are charged with working with the city in implementing and abiding by Plan Lubbock 2040, which states. Strong neighborhoods are the cornerstones of a strong city. The Neighborhood Planning Program celebrates the uniqueness and diversity found with Lubbock neighborhoods, and we work alongside the residents and stakeholders to promote engagement and to strengthen all aspects of our neighborhoods. An ad hoc committee was formed in September at the request of the Neighborhood Association. Although our ad hoc committee members will not be speaking today, I think it's important that I recognize the entire committee. The committee members have a combined residency in the neighborhood in excess of 200 years. Each have given countless hours of their free time to research every detail of this zone change and request, and what its impact might be. A few of the areas addressed, again, for which you have backing documentation, are: one, there is more than enough available housing adjacent to Texas Tech. Traffic in the area is already congested and will only be aggravated by the addition of 500-plus vehicles. This is backed with statistics but also personal experience by all who live in this area and commute daily via those intersections mentioned. Up Campus has submitted a proposal that violates Lubbock zoning ordinances, which govern planned developments, ignores requirements of the Plan Lubbock 2040, and requests illegal spot zoning. All that documentation you received is backed up with the people who are here today. If some of it didn't make sense, they're here to answer questions. At this time, I'd like to introduce the committee, if you would stand, please. Dawn Fleming, Alastair Hamilton, Ty Crowder, James Mahan, Richard Murphy, John Ross Norton, Sharon Prather, Joe Rapier, Don Richards, and Bill Tortorelli. Thank you all for your time. We hope we've properly addressed the following questions posed by the mission of Plan Lubbock 2040 and the mission of the Planning Department. Does it strengthen all aspects of our neighborhood? Does it protect us from inharmonious influences and harmful intrusions? Does it encourage proper population densities and prevent the overcrowding of structures? Does it promote a safe and effective traffic circulation system? Unless there are any questions that I or others from the committee can answer, this concludes our presentation on behalf of the Tech Terrace Unit Neighborhood Association. Thank you. Y'all have any questions?
Not at this time, Ms. Prattis.
Thank you.
I have a discussion moment. Thank you so much, Cindy. Anyone else which seems to speak in opposition, you may come forward.
You might want to slide that over so I don't ruin your computer, which I'm really good at doing.
Do you want me to pull up your presentation?
That'd be great. First of all, a bit of housekeeping. Don't let him intimidate you to stop being the mayor. You're doing a pretty good job. And y'all need to change your placards, the name doesn't match. Sorry.
Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Would you please state your name and your address?
Of course. My name is Stephen Falk, that's with a P-H, by the way. I'm kind of particular about that. I am an architect who lives at 2827 23rd Street. I own a piece of property at 2808 23rd Street that I'm hoping would, to build a new house if, if some folks in this room will finally deal with the UDC. Please hurry. I gotta plant a tree, and it's kind of important. I've been a practicing architect in Lubbock, Texas since October of 1991. I came back from living in the Boston area for about 16 or 17 years, of which I obtained one of my graduate degrees in urban design from a fairly well-known university in Cambridge, Massachusetts. I have a particular interest in urban design so that when a building comes along, it fits with the neighborhood, does not overpower that neighborhood, does not overwhelm that neighborhood, but it fits from a pure density, from a pure architectural standpoint, so it is a good neighbor. The image you see on the screen, your question is, the, the footprints are approximately 200 feet wide, north to south, 450 feet long, you're correct about the 450. What you see before you is that footprint sitting in Jones Stadium. It takes out, I don't know, 30 or so feet on the north end zone, didn't take the double T out, that's a good thing. Takes out seating in what is under construction, Lee Lewis Construction, the Manhattaner's building now. And I'm irritated, I didn't get to design it because I designed everything else around that building, not the original stadium, I'm not that old. But it is an enormous building, absolutely enormous in footprint. If you look close, even though that is oriented 90 degrees to the real coordinates, there is a parking structure in the southwest corner, approximately 60 feet tall, houses 481 cars. The other building is 60 feet tall, and we'll look at that in a moment. Technically speaking, because there is a rooftop pool, there has to be at least a 42-inch guardrail on the roof so that people can't fall off. So it's not 60 feet, it is almost 64 feet tall. Now, I'm about to move this, I hope I'm not about to ruin your computer. So, and it's, is it the up and down? Right to left. Ah, wonderful. I took the, or I didn't, I can't even operate these, these systems in a computer. I draw by hand, I'm really old. That is this building, as near as we can insert it into a Google Earth image. If you think about this site, everything west of this property are two stories and one story, period, all the way to Boston. If you think about the property to the east, that's the Staybridge Hotel, it's three stories, probably 40 feet tall, because that's what the AM district allows. If you go further east, there's an office building owned by Texas Tech, it is six stories tall. If you take the parapet off and the next two panes of glass, that's about the height of this building. It is enormous, enormous, and it's right up on the street. Now, at the planning and zoning presentation, the applicant said, well, look at all the residence halls along 19th Street. They're compatible. Well, the predecessor firm, by the way, I'm a partner with MWM Architects, my bad. I designed your Division of Police Headquarters, by the way. So far, it's okay. Except for a bird or two, we're trying to figure out how the heck they're getting in. We didn't design that part. That building, if you take off the top 15 feet, that's the height of the building. Those residence halls, the predecessor firm, the MWM, was Stiles, Wallace, Messersmith, and Johnson. Messersmith is the late Robert Messersmith, the first M in MWM. He designed the Hewland wall complexes and the Chitwood Towers. Wall and Hewland, those dorms are 150-plus feet away from 19th Street. The Chitwood... The Chitwood Tower is over 200 feet away from 19th Street, not 20 to 25 feet. This building is going to be enormous up on the street. Now, this is looking east on 19th Street. That is looking west on 19th Street. You will notice it is substantially taller than the hotel. Now, that, there's a light pole right there. That is a 40-foot-high light pole. If you look close, they march along in front of this building, and the building is 20 feet plus that parapet taller than those light poles. It's enormous. And I will confess to you, I hope they really have a really good arborist and looking after those trees because, forgive me, construction can do a real number on existing trees like that, and they're incredibly important. This is 20th Street. That tower is going to loom large over the residences and those that call 20th Street home. Now, the station point of that drawing is pretty close to the curb. You can see the curb right there. If you walk across the street to the south and get on the sidewalk, that is a 60-foot-high wall, 450 feet long. It is enormous. Now, buildings of that height create shadows. There's a whole list in the zoning code that deals with obnoxious odors and all those things that impact property. If you look at the image on your left, that is, I don't have it in front of me, but you can see the shadow, the date is on the, up there, I can't read it, I'm almost blind. That's in the afternoon. The one on the right is in the morning. The shadow, you'll notice, and the one on the right, is getting out into 19th Street. We are not known for our snow removal efforts in Lubbock, Texas. I apologize for saying that, but when we have black ice, there's going to be real problems in 19th Street. There's the shadow on June 21st. It is putting shadows in the existing houses east of the two-story units that are built on 20th Street, across 20th Street, over to 21st Street, well into University Avenue. That's a shadow in the afternoon. Now, I'm not one for sunbathing. You do not want to let me do that. The police will come arrest me. But some people may want to do that. That is impacting their ability to enjoy their property. The one on your right is a morning shot of sunrise. Shadows are going to the houses south, southwest, southwest of this property. There's just some additional, different times of the year that you see the shadows that are affecting all around this property. It's a major impact. On December, it is an enormous shadow, and you can imagine that shadow comes all the way around, on the right, all the way to the one on the left. That shadow is in all those houses, backyards, front yards, and the like. So, let's talk about the building for a minute. As an architect, 10, now I know this has nothing to do with zoning codes, but a 10-foot setback causes the need for raided walls around this building so fire doesn't have an impact and jump to the next property. Let's talk about the alley for the moment. It is proposed, I believe, to widen to 20 feet. The fire marshal will require a 30-foot fire lane back there because this building's more than 30 feet tall and because they want to get their trucks far enough away from the wall of the building to reach it. So, I believe the fire marshal and the fire lane requirements requires of a building of this size to have a fire lane in the front or a public street. It has that, that's 19th. In a public way, that alley, but it's not 30 feet wide. If you notice in the lower right-hand corner by the parking garage, it says "Retail loading and trash." Well, I'm pretty sure the city's not going to allow this property to put their trash into the dumpsters along the alley. They will have to have their own inside dumpster. This project will be at least one, if not two, 20-yard dumpsters. That's a serious truck to try to get in and out of that alley because it has to back in perpendicularly, I said that wrong, sorry, I'm not an English major. It's just simply not going to work. If you look slightly to the left, it says "Residential loading and trash." Same thing about trash. Now, I have three daughters that believe in amazon.com, amazon.com, and amazon.com. I'm dumbfounded how many of those trucks are running around, gosh forbid, all over the place. They're supposed to go to that alley to deliver to the residents of this building. That's going to last a week. Those guys are going, excuse me, drivers, are going to go to 19th Street because there is no center median that they can park in, a left-turn lane. They're going to park in the southern drive lane of 19th Street. FedEx trucks, amazon.com trucks, UPS trucks. It is a major hazard. At a minimum, if I was the architect, I would say, "Guys, we need to have a delivery yard with 16-foot clear so that those trucks will get off the drive lanes onto this property for delivery." And then, not sure how they're going to handle that, but that seems to be a major, major conflict. I don't know about you, but a lot of people take off, it's like the Indianapolis 500 from a red light, and they're going to go up and realize there's vehicles parked there. It's a major problem. So, those of you that know me know that I like to doodle. How can I solve this problem and maybe, though I may be ridden out of the neighborhood on a rail, tarred and feathered, if some form of housing was going to be built there? If you look at all of the zoning that is certainly currently on this property, most of them reference three-story, 40-foot height limits. So let's do, how can we possibly do a three-story building? Well, if you look at the plan that has been proposed by the applicant, there's two courtyards. I added a third and took the floors four and five off and filled in that parking structure with units. Put the parking below gray. Now, the applicant just had a heart attack because that's a bazillion dollars. But you now can frame this out of wood and save a whole ton of money and possibly do a three-story building. Let's talk about parking. I recognize that according to the applicant, they meet the zoning. But if you look at the CA, the C, everybody says there'll be one unit, one parking space for an efficiency, one and a half for a one-bedroom, two or two and a half for two bedrooms and up. I shared this with P&amp;Z last time. One of the scariest times in my life was when my daughters got their driver's license. Now, they think, they still do, by the way, that I am a bazillionaire. All of y'all think architects are wealthy, too. I hadn't found those rooms with the $20, $50, and $100 bills yet. Please let me know where they are. So I got them a car. There's 600 beds in this facility. Maybe not all of them have a car, but the majority of them will. There's parking for 481 cars. Now, using my simplistic mathematical capabilities, where do the other 120 cars go? They're going on 20th Street, 21st Street. Now, they may look over at the Alumni Center and say, "Look, Texas Tech has a free parking lot over there. Let's go park over there." Well, that I cause enough for. But there's 120 cars that have to be dealt with. Now, let's talk about traffic circulation. People come into and out of this parking structure. 19th is one way to the east. If you're going east, it's one way to the west if you're going west. You come out and you turn and go on 19th Street, going up to the University Avenue and 19th intersection, well, let's just whip a U-turn in one of the busiest intersections in Lubbock, Texas. It's allowed, but you have to be able to look down the street 500 feet in order to do a U-turn. Same thing is applicable to Boston and 19th. Let's just whip a U-turn right there. 480 cars through the day making U-turns all over the place. It is a disaster in the making. Someday, somebody, whether it's TexDOT, even though I know y'all are about to take the street over, or the city of Lubbock, is going to put a "no U-turn" sign there. Now, all those cars are going to go up to University Avenue. They're going to turn right and come back through the neighborhood on 20th Street, 21st Street, 22nd Street, maybe down my street or 23rd, to get over to Boston. That's going to have an enormous impact on this neighborhood, enormous. But that's what a three-story building looks like. I don't even want to talk about the architecture. I can take you to a spot in the middle of Interstate 35 West in Fort Worth and show you five or six of buildings that look almost like that. Same thing, look in the other direction. I can take you, by the way, to Dallas. You have to stand in the middle of Stemmons Freeway. There's about a half a dozen of those buildings sitting there. That building is not compatible with Lubbock architecture. One of the problems in this day and age of my profession is all cities are becoming homogenized. Everything looks the same. It's your job, in my opinion, I hope, to realize that there's a lot of unique characteristics about Lubbock, Texas that need to be maintained. Now, I pulled out my rather old 2005 zoning code called a friend of mine, I'm not going to mention because you each know him, and he'll get really mad if I bring his name up, and he sent me the qualification requirements for a PUD. Mandatory requirements, mandatory. The parcel in question has unique characteristics that significantly impact development, such as, for example, unusual shape, well, they're rectangles, or proportions, nah, they're just a rectangle, unusual topography. Well, it does drop about a foot and a half across the side. That's pretty high here. Or potentially incompatible land uses on surrounding property. Well, I don't think the residential quality of the Tech Terrace neighborhood is incompatible. What's incompatible is high-density housing. Then you go to the next thing, and it says "Concept Plan Eligibility Criteria." That word "concept" scares me because when you look under the CA zoning and you've been told, Kristen says 60 feet tall. Well, it's actually unlimited height. That means they can go as high as they want after, if y'all approve it today, with no recourse unless one of my neighbors, who I'm sure is an attorney, gets grumpy. Unlimited height. Whereas if you look at all of the zoning that is currently on this property, our next door at the hotel, three stories, 40 feet high. There seems to be an imbalance there. But let's say there is something, and you let that fly because they are mandatory. Under the concept plan, it says, amongst other things, "Provided that the City Council determines that a use deviation is justified based on a demonstrated need and the current planning and development objectives of the city." There's a residential dorm in the pipeline at Texas Tech. There's one that's going to be renovated here shortly at Texas Tech, and I believe where the auditorium and Coliseum were removed, it's the intent of the Athletic Department to put a residential hall for athletes, 49% of them for athletes, in the future. Do not know if there's a need for student housing. I think there is an underlying concern about, in the Tech Terrace neighborhood, that this is going to be another North Overton. Now, what McDougal Properties did there is extraordinary. They got rid of uses that are just incredibly incompatible with areas surrounding Texas Tech, increased the taxes from 80 million to 800 million, a magnificent achievement. But now, those properties have been flipped a couple of times. Rumor has it, because my daughters are old enough, they're on their own, the quality of the environment is not good. They're not being maintained. That is a major concern to the Texas Tech Terrace community, neighborhood. Then you go on on the concept. It says, "Land use patterns established by the Plan Development, PD Development shall be compatible with existing and planned uses on and adjacent to the site." 200 feet wide, 450 feet long compared to essentially single-family houses, though there are students that are not related, live in some of those. It is not compatible, not only in footprint, but in the height of the building. "The PD Development shall improve the appearance of the city," I disagree with that, "through quality building design and site development, the provision of trees and landscaping with and beyond the minimum requirements of the base zoning district, the preservation of unique and/or historic sites or structures, and/or the provision of open space and other desirable features of the site beyond minimum requirements." This property is built 10 feet off the rear light line, 10 feet off the side yards, 20 or 25 feet in front. There is no open space as far as the zoning code determines what open space is. Courtyards don't count because I've tried several times, and she won't let me do that. Nothing personal. Lastly, "The PD Development shall not be allowed solely as a means of increasing the density or intensity of development." Well, of course it is. It's all about the number of fixtures, number of units. I'm sure the applicant will say, "We've got to have that many to make the deal work." Well, this is beyond incompatible with a neighborhood. This is beyond, in my opinion, compatible with what's coming in the UDC. In the 2040 plan, it is not compatible in any shape, form, or fashion. It is, the general provisions of most specs, I'm sorry, I'm not architect, my bad. Zoning, in the zoning document today, the very first part says, and this happens to be a CA commercial apartment district, "When proposed development is adjacent to and any residentially zoned property, to any residentially zoned property, the proposed development shall be designed to provide for maximum compatibility with the adjacent development. Architectural design, landscaping, screening, parking areas should be properly provided to ensure maximum protection of lower-density uses." By any stretch of the imagination, it does not meet that. It further says, "No use shall otherwise be permitted which is or would reasonably be in interest to the neighborhood residents or which would interfere with the reasonable use and enjoyment of their property by the reason of emission of dust, smoke, odor, glare, and always vibration, trash, junk, water spray, or by reason of any condition which would amount to a public nuisance at common law." We have a parking structure, and carbon monoxide comes out of all 481 cars. It's an open-air parking structure. It has to be open on two sides so the air blows all those wonderful fumes next door. I would submit to you that shadows could be considered a public nuisance because it robs the people that own property, who rent property, from the utilization of their front yard and their backyard because of lack of sun. Trust me, it ain't going to be wonderful. That is in just about every zoning district in this code. I encourage you to deny this. This is not compatible with a Tech Terrace neighborhood. This is an incredibly big project, enormous. It's bigger than most of the developments that are in North Overton, from a height standpoint, from a footprint standpoint. The traffic parking would be nuts, just crazy. I would encourage you to deny this applicant and encourage him to come back with a more, if they want to, a more reasonably vetted design, vetted with the neighborhood before they make their application. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. All right, public hearing is still open for anyone wishing to speak in opposition to 6.3.
Something that hasn't been mentioned today but has been mentioned in the past is, I'm sorry, Sid Sideman. I live at 3202 20th Street. Something near and dear to everyone's heart, and certainly the publicity that's gone on recently in the city of Lubbock with deserted animals. This unit, this building is pet-friendly, subject to breed, with absolutely nowhere for pets to defecate, urinate, or even take a walk. And... And, but I don't know what the percentage would be, but certainly 10 to 15% will be deserted at the end of every semester. So please keep that in mind in your deliberations and considerations for whatever else has gone on today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sideman.
I'm sure all of you are familiar with the old adage about you study history so you don't make the same mistake again. I think that there was a council many years ago that made this one mistake of letting Tech Terrace, North Overton start encroaching with apartments. It was a residential area, it was one of the nicest ones in Lubbock at one time. It was the original subdivision between downtown and Tech. Dr. Overton that developed it was very adamant about the type of construction that went on there. But at some point, a council let the apartments and duplexes and houses behind houses come in and the neighborhood slowly went down. And then it got down so far, it had to be started over at huge expense, at the cost of many historical structures in that neighborhood, as well as a family-friendly neighborhood that is now all students, we've lost most of the families there. But I think that that is a mistake that we should look back on as the history of the city, that was a mistake and shouldn't be repeated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nash.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Terry Seis. I keep hearing all these, my address is 2619 19th Street. I own the building next to the proposed recommendations. As of Friday, this young gentleman even came to my house asking why we were against it. I'm not, I don't want it built there, not because it's not going to make it efficient for the students, but what he's charging the students, what they will charge the students, no one can beat my rate of rent. I look at it for the international students we have in our apartment complex, as well as anyone who can afford to get into our complex. That's what education's about, learning and growing from it. I hear all these 10 feet here, 20 feet there, 5 feet here, until you drive that alley, you don't know what it is. Until you go back there and see what occurs, you don't know what it is. I can sit here and give you your own history. In the 70s, you had the tiki house there, that was a good party house, by the way. In the 80s, you had nothing but people with elites, I call them. They would have their little steak, go to the game, come back, they'd be drinking out back in the parking lot on 20th Street with their little flask. I don't want to see that happen to this neighborhood. I've seen what it did to Overton. I've seen the people that it has attracted there, but most of all, I've seen it for profit. It does not meet with the mission statements you have made about your purpose, about your ideas for Lubbock. If that was your intentions, then keep that in mind. There is more vacancies that you can shake a finger at throughout Lubbock. They don't only want it because it's convenient, they want it so it's right across the street. They want it because they don't want to drive 10, 15 minutes. How many of you got that luxury? I'm emotional about it because I'm getting older, I'm seeing the deteriorations already I take pride when I can rent it to a foreign student that doesn't have to pay $1,005, $1,006 just to be across the street. If you lose sight on the tensions that this community, this state was built on the backbone of the people that helped each other, not for profit, but by, you said here, in church, neighborhoods, harmony, that's what it's all about. And that's how I feel about it because you can take 5 feet, you can add 10 feet, you can make it 6 feet tall, 60 feet tall. Who's not going to benefit from it? You can sit there and say the plans are great, when we tried to buy the excess land in 86, we already sold our 20 acres in California, but we were told no, because we wanted to build a two-story apartment complex adjacent to what we have. We were told no. Now you're going to allow a six-story building to come in because it brings more money? As of 10 years ago, we tried, we were told, no, it's not for sale. What did we get? Now they want to build a six-story building to make 10 times that amount and destroy the harmony of the neighborhood? That's not what Lubbock's about. That's when I first came out here in the 70s, late 70s, this is not what Lubbock's about. And should you start changing to make it an Overton area, as you see, your own crime reports will tell you, your own traffic reports will tell you, even the people that live there will tell you, it's deteriorated to a bad extent. And as we pointed out today, they use the Tech Neighborhood Unit to bring in instructors, to bring in the notoriety that they come with so they can build a better community. And like I said, I don't know all your figures and that, maybe you don't even take emotions in it, but taking one fact of it, if you don't live in our neighborhood, you don't know what we go through every day. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate you all keeping that, Cindy, keeping that concise since I have a spokesperson. Thank you. We will next move to anyone wishing to speak in favor. Please step forward. Again, if you'll please state your name and your address, maybe Cory just speak who you're speaking for.
Good afternoon, I'm Cory Doolan, I'm with AMD Engineering, and I'm speaking on behalf of Up Campus and George Harburger on this property and Thomas Payne on this property. Just wanted to say Kristen did a great job presenting this, there's a lot of information on here. Also wanted to just confirm that the PH and Stephen's name is for Stephen, not Falk, so it's F for Falk, so. Well, I knew you'd want them to know. So I've heard a lot of cases on this area over the last few years, there's been a lot of people try to do something with this area. I get the pleasure of being a part of planning and zoning cases quite often, and sometimes I get to sit through several hours of deliberations and it's a lot of fun. This one I'm a little bit new to, I wasn't a part of the previous cases or even the previous efforts on this case. But just some of the things that I've heard from the neighborhood on all of the various cases I wanted to address, and I feel like, I feel like the proponent, I feel like that the people proposing this project have taken those concerns to heart within the realm of providing a viable project that is worth the effort to go to construction, go get a loan, and stick their neck out there. So just a few of these questions I'm going to go through, or some of the concerns that I've heard. There's too much traffic on 20th Street. Well, we have eliminated roughly five driveways on 20th Street, there's currently a 104-car commuter lot, for all intents and purposes, there right now. That's what's existing. We've taken all the driveways off of 20th Street, will certainly help with that traffic. There's been concerns about the people that live there parking along the streets. We would certainly support parking permits on the street. We've said to staff, and I think it's been mentioned to many of you as well, that we would not permit the residents in these facilities to have one of those permits, that they must park in one of the facilities provided on site. Another question, there's too much traffic in the alley, or that's been a concern, and it's a legitimate concern. There's not any access to this tower, it's a five-story tower, not six-story, there's not any access to that tower for vehicular access for the residents except on 19th Street. So you can't come down the alley or 20th Street and access the tower. You can only get in and out on 19th. The access along the alley for the structure is only for service vehicles, for deliveries and things of that nature. I believe in the latest city's aerial image, you can see, just a little bit east of this, you can see an 18-wheeler in the alley. It's already being used quite a bit as delivery, as access, it's a rear entry for many of these residences already. I lived in a rear-entry development that had a lot more garages than this, it's really only serving the south side of this and not all are using it. So I feel like that that should hopefully alleviate some of those concerns on traffic in the alley. We're going to do our best to widen it as much as we can, and we've offered to the city that if additional right-of-way could be granted, we'd participate in adding up to five foot of that paved surface. Another issue is security, concerns about security. There was a woman that spoke about concerns with her neighbors, she lived much further south in Tech Terrace, and the students, and the beer cans, and partying and things of that nature, and concerns about more of that coming to the area. With this project, we're proposing at least 100 security cameras, there will be onsite personnel monitoring the facility, monitoring these cameras, monitoring these students 24 hours a day. That's not something that is happening with the rest of the rental properties in Tech Terrace. We've heard concerns that there's too much traffic on 19th, we'll add too much traffic, heard again concerns about U-turns. 19th Street is the widest road we have in Lubbock County. There's nine lanes, five lanes going east. If there's ever a road you can do a U-turn on, it's 19th Street, Boston Avenue, you could do a U-turn with an 18-wheeler and it'd be pretty easy to get around. I don't foresee the city putting a no-U-turn sign there where you have a protected arrow and you have five lanes to turn into. I've talked to many of you about this case, and I don't remember which one of you mentioned that you do a U-turn at that exact spot every time you go to Cafe J. U-turns are completely legal traffic operations, and we have the signalization, we have proper signalization all along 19th Street, and more than enough lanes to handle the traffic that we have there. I heard "save the God Bowl," we've heard that for years, "save the God Bowl." This structure unfortunately is not reusable. I believe that that has been tried, there have been cases that have tried this, they've not been successful. We've heard "save the history of the St. Mary's of the Plains Hospital." We've incorporated, as Kristen showed in the slide, portions of that hospital that are going to be dismantled piece by piece and rebuilt into the facade, into the landscaping, into the front door of the proposed building. The red doors that are there now, you will see those again, they'll be a little bit closer up to the front, all the stonework around it, some of the architectural features are going to be incorporated into the landscape, the fence is going to remain, we're going to do the best we can to maintain that and extend it and repair it where we're closing four of the five driveways along 19th Street. One individual mentioned that Tech is not growing as much and we don't need the housing. I can tell you that as a development engineer, I've gotten more calls in the last six months on apartment housing, on multifamily housing. Single-family housing is drying up in our business right now, but multifamily is not. There is a need for student housing. Texas Tech recognizes that need and they are being proactive about that. There is need for other private housing in the vicinity as well. I believe Brianna mentioned in the State of the City address, mentioning South Plains College and how that's driving students to downtown, and it wasn't but a couple hours ago that she said that's going to create a need for students that want to walk to school, to have housing near schools where they can walk to school. Not every student drives a vehicle. There's too much danger, we've heard, with pedestrians crossing 19th Street. The Texas, the Tech Terrace Unit is already a majority of student housing. It's not to the level that North Overton was, but it's getting that direction, it's trending away from owner-occupied housing. A lot of students there and they all walk to school, they ride their bikes to school. We did a query through the police department, and there's only been one pedestrian accident resulting in a fatality in the last five years coming across to Texas Tech, and it was from the Overton area. In that area, crossing University at Overton, there were 12 accidents reported in a five-year period. Crossing 19th Street, there's been one accident reported with a pedestrian and no fatalities. Not a significant amount for there to be a need to say no more students living south of 19th Street. We've heard there's not enough parking per bed, that was something that was really spoken vehemently about. We've reduced the number of beds, which increased the volume of parking per bed. Just some stats from Texas Tech, Texas Tech only has 12,347 commuter parking spaces for 40,000-plus students. Of those 12,347, only 10,381 were sold for 2023. So we've got tens of thousands of students that are not parking on Tech campus. They are walking, they're riding bikes, they're taking buses. There are parking passes available for on-campus housing, they have available 5,377 spaces available. They only sold 51, 55, and that's out of 7,232 students. About 71% of the students living on campus have a vehicle. We're planning for 80% to have a vehicle and to have a place to park. We recognize they're going to have their boyfriends over, we recognize they're going to have their girlfriends over. Those things are going to happen, they're going to find a place to park, or they're going to find a new girlfriend or boyfriend, or they're going to go into Tech Terrace to their rented house there. I can assure you, we're not going to put this building in Jones Stadium. It's big enough to go in there, but we're not going to put it in there. It is 200 feet by 450, that is a large structure. It's not large enough to drop stories, to drop levels off of the top, to create the kind of project necessary to fit the area and the price of the property. For reference on the size of the structure, the center, the other facilities that are to the east of University, those are on average 340 feet by 550 feet. So on average, they're 140 feet deeper and on average 100 feet wider than the project that we are proposing. The setbacks on the residential homes is what they're building on 20th Street, those setbacks on the sides are wider than any residential development that I've designed in the last 20 years. Typically, you build a house five feet off of its setback, you have 10 feet between the homes, we're averaging about 15 to 16 feet between those. We've heard that it's too tall. We heard the comments about the shade, and certainly it will create shade, everything creates shade, I create shade. I will say that the elevation constraints, there are elevation constraints for the CA, there are elevation constraints for the property next door, it's 75 feet. For the by-right use that the property has now, there is no limit to the height, the by-right use has no limit. Again, Coleman Hall 12-story, Hewland Clement wall gates, Talkington all six-story, Chipwood, Waymoth 12-story, all of those structures are closer in proximity to the Tech Terrace Neighborhood Park than this facility. All of those dorms, I realize they're further from 19th Street, but the proximity to a lot of the houses where you do have owner-occupied homes, those are closer, they're taller and they're closer. We've heard the use doesn't fit with the neighborhood. The main building, for all intents and purposes, not in the neighborhood, it fronts 19th Street. It is separated by another product that we're creating that is so much better, and I don't know if I can go through these. This property right here, right now is a parking lot. I heard a constituent say, "Well Cory, I wouldn't want to live across a street from this." I said, "Well, you wouldn't want to live across a street from 104 space commuter lot either, that certainly is rundown and not looking terrific." The main structure fronts 19th Street, which is a nine-lane thoroughfare, is across from a major university- It is across from a major university, where there is a need for pedestrian traffic going to and from school. This will ease traffic throughout all of Lubbock. You just passed a bond to build roads. We're going to pull 600 students away from some of these other projects. The project that we're getting the zoning for on North University, those people, we're going to be driving a significant amount to get to school. They're going to be using our roadways, they're going to be using our facilities, they're going to be looking for parking onsite. That's going to increase traffic. This isn't going to increase the traffic. These kids are going to be walking to school and back. For those of you that have kids in college, and have kids that live near their university or on their university, they don't use their cars as much as those that live 10 miles away. I've heard the mantra "save Tech Terrace." I would say the only way to save Tech Terrace is to return the homes to owner-occupied homes. It's over 70% rental, roughly. That's not a recipe for saving Tech Terrace. I had, I visited with a gentleman that was opposed to this project, and he gave his stats for what he was opposed to. And they were legitimate concerns, and I called and said, "Here's what we've done to answer some of these concerns." He said, "Those aren't my concerns. I don't want competition, plain and simple. I don't want competition." He owns 40 homes in Tech Terrace, and he doesn't want competition. That's not something that we're going to be able to answer. That's not a solution or a complaint that we're going to be able to solve with this. And that's really the only complaint that we haven't made an effort to answer. I would say that this is the most viable project that has an entity ready to go, that is a downzone, I would say, from the existing zoning, from the existing by-right zoning. This is a significant downzone. I've heard that people wouldn't live across the street from it, but they certainly wouldn't want to live across the street from some of the things that can go by right without having to come here to ask council permission to build. It can be taller, it can be much less compatible with the neighborhood today. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Doolin. Anyone else present wishing to speak in favor of 6.3?
Mayor Thomas Paine, 15309 FM 1730 in Lubbock County. How are y'all doing today? It was a great presentation at lunch, thank you for that. Transparently, the first thing that I want to say is that, on short notice, and as of this morning, I acquired the rights of the applicant under the contract with Mr. Hardburger. So, whereas I was intending to speak to you today anyway, to support this project, which I strongly feel needs to happen, I'm now standing to advocate for my own project. I know a good bit of the history of the previous zone cases that went to P&amp;Z. And by the way, I'm probably going to use all of my accrued time from speaking very succinctly at many cases I've had before you, I'm probably going to eat it all up today, and I apologize for that. I know that there was a zone case that failed at P&amp;Z. I know there were significant changes made by the then-applicant to try to address as many of the neighborhood objections as possible, and I believe they addressed many, many of them effectively. And after that, the Planning and Zoning Commission didn't just pass this proposal, they passed it 6 to 2, which is a resounding margin. And I think that happened for good reason. Planning and Zoning Commission took into account the changes that had been made, and at that point saw a fit to pass this project on to council. We all understand council has the final authority. I have a lot of things I want to mention, and I'm going to jump around with some of them a little bit. But one of them is that the city council is elected to represent the citizens, and that means the best interest of the citizens, that's all of Lubbock. I have always opposed openly anything that attempted to divide Lubbock into pieces, and I continue to oppose that. Looking at the best interest and the interest of all the citizens of Lubbock, it's not the only consideration, I'm not trying to suggest that it is, but it's also not no consideration. The adware and tax base created by this project would be in the neighborhood of the entirety of the adware and tax base increase by the annexation of Highland Oaks subdivision, the entirety of the subdivision. And again, that's not the only consideration, but it doesn't, in my opinion, go without mention either. And for the record, I have not been involved in, as an applicant, or the activities of applicant prior to Day A, good or bad, different people may see them differently, but I wasn't involved in any of those, just for the record. I also want to be clear that nobody is going to step forward and support the right of all people to speak, and I think that the Tech Terrace neighborhood has done a great job of banding together. It's obvious that they've done exactly what they said they've done, and they're to be committed for that. It's my job to give you some different things to consider than what you've heard so far. For example, the comment was made about dumpsters in the alleys. Well, there won't be dumpsters in the alley from the apartments in this project. They're required to have their own onsite garbage service, so that won't be creating any additional traffic in the alley. I've also heard a lot of talk about, and the use of the word "insertion," that this project is being inserted into the Tech Terrace neighborhood, and that's misleading. It's being proposed at the perimeter, at the edge of the neighborhood. The word "insertion" makes it sound like it's being dropped into the middle of Tech Terrace Park, and certainly we all know that's not the case. It's not a secret that I'm a big proponent of progress, and that issue is a big part of this discussion. I think that the city of Lubbock is going to make a statement, one way or the other, by how the passage or not passage of this case goes. Texas Tech does not have enough student housing. They certainly don't have enough. The statement was made, there's enough student housing near Tech, and clearly, that's not the case, because the people that develop student housing keep having to move further and further away from campus to build more student housing. So, if there was enough near campus, there wouldn't be a requirement to move further and further away to build giant apartment complexes for student housing. One of the things I'll mention is there's a project called Cooper Crest. It's a two-story apartment barrack that's maybe 50 feet from the property line of Laura Bush Elementary, Laura Bush Middle School, and it looks directly down on the middle school grounds. And those are middle school children, not college-age tenants. That project, by any comparison, is inferior to what's being proposed here. There have been, there's been a lot of discussion on the part of primarily two groups in opposition to this. One is a group of a lot of people who don't live close to this project, and the argument that they're going to be impacted, it's questionable in terms of how much they're going to be impacted. If I live on the south and west sides of Tech Terrace Park, it's hard for me to imagine how I'm going to presume to be impacted by this project. Corey co-opted one of my points, but I'm going to make it again, just for emphasis. We just came from almost across the street, and the city proudly proclaimed that South Plains College is now occupying the old city hall. And our business development director made the statement, certainly in a positive way, that that will spur development of housing for students in downtown so that they can walk to school, and that is a direct quote. Well, there is a need for more development around Texas Tech so that students can walk to school as well. And many of them don't have cars, and certainly won't need cars if a project like this is There was a comment made about Texas Tech touring Tech Terrace and using that to entice faculty to Lubbock. I scarcely imagine that someone envisioning coming to Lubbock to go to work at Texas Tech would be offended at the kind of student housing project that this would be, that they would see on that tour. I can't really imagine that they would say, "Instead, I'm going to go to work at the University of Texas, where this project is pedestrian, one of many." Certainly, they'd be surrounded by these kinds of things there. The "not in my backyard" group, which was acknowledged, and I appreciate that, and I don't have a problem with people saying, "I like this project, but I don't want it in my backyard." But as a city, if we're going to progress into the future, we can't let that be the end-all argument, because we'll never do anything. You're always going to have someone who doesn't want projects in their backyard, and that just can't be our guiding light. The interest of the city as a whole, which is all of the citizens, has to be the precedent. And I don't mean by that that we should make it impossible for someone to enjoy their home. I'm not suggesting we should go start raising houses to do student housing or anything of the sort. I'm just suggesting that can't be the end-all and be-all argument. The other primary group that you hear from, and they don't tell it to you this way, is the group who has a conflict of interest, self-interest. So, I'm a little bit confused, because we heard someone talk about an objection to this project, and unless I misunderstood him, he was complaining that the people doing this project were going to charge Tech students too much. And maybe I did misunderstand that, but that's what I thought I heard. Well, someone else charging too much would be a competitive advantage, not disadvantage. And whether it is or not really is not relevant to the issue at hand. And rents in rent houses in Tech Terrace neighborhood is really not relative to the issue at hand. This isn't about self-interest groups objecting because of the effect on their personal pocketbook. An example I'll give you is, if I sell an apartment tract to an apartment developer, and subsequent to that, I have another apartment developer that wants to buy an adjacent tract, and I come to zone it, you can be assured that the guy that already owns the apartment tract would be all too happy to show up to object. We can't let that control the planning and zoning of the city. If we do, again, we're just going to come to a screeching halt, because you'll only be able to do zoning on large pieces of undeveloped land, where you're so far ahead of development that there's no way to know all of the things, all of the details of things demand for uses that will come along later, and we can't fit everything into a box. Once upon a time, not that long ago, there was a very prominent voice, I'm not calling names, who demanded, and by the way, this is on City of Lubbock video, if you want to go find it, if you need some help, I'll help you find it, demanded that I personally do exactly this kind of project in what they deemed Old Lubbock. Now, I want to repeat, I object vehemently about the use of any argument technique that divides any of us from the others of us, but I'm simply making the point of what was said. And Old Lubbock then was defined by that person as inside the loop in north and east Lubbock. Well, this is that project. This is exactly that project, and I'm here to do it. Now, the fact that one person demanded that I do that doesn't mean the council has to agree, and I understand that very well, but I'm just making the point that that person was a powerful voice, and it just so happens they aren't participating in this, and I find that very interesting. It is noteworthy they live in that neighborhood now. We heard a statement that Tech Terrace is already deteriorating. Well, obviously, that's not because of this project, it doesn't exist today. This project, in my opinion, would be nothing but a project that would generate progress and improvement in general in the neighborhood, and certainly in the opinion of people toward the neighborhood, people that come to Texas Tech, parents that bring their students to tour Texas Tech. This is nothing but a positive thing in the eyes of those people. I don't think it's fair to say that this project would weaken the neighborhood. I think it's the other way around. I think that it strengthens the city of Lubbock, Texas Tech, and does not weaken the neighborhood. I want to mention a project that comes to my mind, that I compare to this a little bit. Ken Hance had a retirement project that he came to do at a point in time, and it was at least equally public in terms of the opposition to that project. And there were all kinds of things said about how horrible it was going to be. That project is now constructed, it's not hurt anyone. I suspect, although I certainly don't know this, that many of the people who objected to the project now have their parents living in that very facility without any objection to it being there at all. And I only say that to make the point that I don't fault anyone for coming forward, with or without emotion, to argue against a case like this. It's the council's job to weigh the weight of those voices against the value of the project to the community as a whole, and I believe that you'll do that. I believe that some of the things I heard, deliveries, for example, I believe those are, there are some things I heard today that I believe that I can address that have not been addressed at this point. I certainly haven't had time, because of the shortness of notice, to have any opportunity to meet with anyone, and I apologize, I know that the council didn't have notice of this either, but this came about this morning, and I had meetings all morning, and then I got to go hear the mayor talk at lunch. And so, I apologize for that, but there's no intention to keep it from anyone, and certainly, clearly, I'm not hiding. I'm here to answer any questions I can, be happy to talk to the people in the neighborhood. As far as I'm concerned, this is not over. Although the council might have a different opinion in a minute, and I understand that. There are two readings that are required here, and I would request that the council consider either the passage of this project on to a second reading. Between now and then, I'll have time to try to address some of the questions that I have not had a chance to yet, or a postponement to a later date, which would give me the same opportunity. I appreciate your time, I'm sorry I was so long.
Thank you, Mr. Paine. All right, anyone else?
Let's go ahead and wait, Ms. Martina Garcia, let's go ahead and take a five-minute break, and then we'll take back up in speaking in favor. We'll be in recess, let's do seven, we'll be in recess until 4:00 PM. All right, we're back from recess, it is 4:04, and we are back in session. We are currently on agenda item 6.3, and all those wishing to speak in favor, and we will proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Benny Nixon, I live at 9601 York Avenue. I'm a commercial real estate guy, been involved in commercial real estate in Lubbock for nearly 50 years. I know I don't look that season, but I am old. I come here to speak in favor of the project. I think this project is good for Texas Tech, it's good for the students, it's good for our tax base here in Lubbock, both from a real estate and a It's good for our tax base here in Lubbock, both from a real estate and a school tax. I think it takes an old, beat-up, commercial piece of property, renews it, and I am in favor of it and would ask the city council to vote progressively for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thanks for having me. My name is George Hardburger. I live at 1602 Texas Avenue, and I'm the manager for Generator One, which owns the subject property. I'm not going to go over all the things that everybody else has. I think Mr. Doolan and Mr. Payne covered a lot of the points that I would cover had they not done that. I'd like to elaborate on a couple of them. When they say it just doesn't fit the neighborhood, I know Mr. Doolan said 19th Street's not the neighborhood, but it's not. On that block, we've got a hotel, we've got this property, we've got two pieces of real estate that have affiliated with religious organizations, and then we've got a bed and breakfast, plus another apartment complex. Anyway, to me, that, it's on a state highway. It doesn't, it's not part of the neighborhood. And then the 20th Street side, where those houses are, I think that Mr. Busch and up campus, the previous developers, did a great job in trying to make it fit into the neighborhood. It's not that different than what you see in Overton. It's individual houses. It's much more cohesive than a three-story apartment building, which was under the previous plan. I know the neighborhood has said, maybe not today, but they've said numerous times that they want a hotel. They want a boutique hotel. And I know a company from Amarillo has come forward and said, "You know, we've got $60 million," or something like that, "to build a boutique hotel." And I expect some of you may have even met with those guys. But I got to say, the Stay Bridge went into bankruptcy last year and was sold at a fire sale price. Texas Tech is planning to build a hotel on the west side of campus down by the medical center. I just don't think a hotel's in the cards here. I believe that all the real issues that the neighborhood has brought up have been addressed. Traffic, you know, traffic's not, traffic's a problem right now. Right now, that's an empty commuter lot. People drive from four, five miles away, park there, and walk to school. Walking to school is what these kids are going to do. There's also traffic coming in to Cafe J. There's traffic going from 20th Street to 19th and vice versa. And at a minimum, there are 200, 300 cars a day going in and out of there, most of which go in and out somewhat on 20th Street. That won't be the case going forward. There's no entry, there's no cross-traffic, there's no Cafe J, for good or bad, but that, the traffic will be better than it is now. I believe this is a, oh, I wanted to say one thing about the tax dollars that this will generate. It'll generate, I don't know, $800,000 bucks a year, somewhere in that range. More than half of that goes to our schools, our public schools, at no cost. There are no kids. These students do not have kids. This is found money for our public schools. I believe this is a legacy project for Lubbock and Texas Tech. It's until Carlton House was built, which is north of Marshall Sharp and north of Tech, I don't think a new apartment complex had been built anywhere near campus for 10 years or so. I think we're behind other college towns like Waco, College Station, et cetera. And I think this project, you know, some people don't like the architecture, but so what? I mean, that's a matter of taste. That's just an opinion. I think the students like it, and it's a great recruiting tool for students, for Texas Tech, for athletes, whatever. There are no perfect projects. You can find fault with anything, but I don't think there's much fault with this. The previous developer went way beyond what I thought was required to try to deal with the issues of the neighborhood, and they never gave an inch. They basically said, "We don't want any student housing." I'd like to defend Steve Busch from up campus a little bit. He was maligned by this group, he was insulted, and he was ridiculed, and it was really embarrassing for me. He made a lot of concessions. He told me he had eight projects currently going around the country: University of Minnesota, University of Virginia, Florida State, Texas A&amp;M. They're all bigger than this one, and the cities are saying to him, "How can we help?" And that's what I think we ought to do here. Ross Perot Jr. is a guy that I kind of look up to. He's one of the preeminent real estate minds in the country and the world, maybe. And he says to have great cities, you've got to have great developers. You guys know Thomas Payne? He's another great developer. I think Steve Busch was, too. Thomas is a man of his word. He's smart, he's thoughtful, and he's a straight shooter. I think he fills the bill. Another thing Perot said was, "Never turn away someone that wants to invest their money in your community." I've met with every one of you, with the exception of you, Mr. Mayor, and that was my fault, but you've all seen the project. You saw it in the early stages when it was bigger, and with no exceptions, you liked it. There's been a lot of noise since then, and I understand you've had time to think about it, and maybe there's some things you didn't like, but I think the concessions that have been made have made it a great project. The opposition's loud, they're organized, they're militant, and that's the way it is, you know? And they laugh at you when they don't like what you say. So anyway, congratulations to them for, you know, mounting a good opposition, but I firmly believe this is a great project. I'm proud of it, and I respectfully request that you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hardburger. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Item 6.3? All right, seeing none, I will now close the public hearing on Agenda Item 6.3. Is there a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.3?
Mayor, I'd make a motion to postpone Agenda Item 6.3 to May, March 21st.
I have a motion to postpone to, what was the date again?
21st.
To 3/21. Motion to postpone the vote to 3/21 by Mr. Massengill and a second by Dr. Wilson. All right, I have a motion and a second to postpone. Is there any discussion on Mr. Massengill's motion?
Mayor.
Mr. Massengill.
I'll try to make a couple of comments. I'll try to make them, keep them germane to the postponement and my thought process. First of all, I would just tell everybody, thank you all for being here, and I also want to, I appreciate how both sides handled it. I've done this long enough to see this go the wrong way, and I think everyone's been real respectful. I can nod my head on both sides. Here's my concern, and that is what can happen without this discussion. There's a lot of things, in my opinion, that impact the integrity of the tech terrorist neighborhood without us having the luxury of this discussion. This is news to me that Mr. Payne is involved in this process, and if there's a way to do this with him being involved, then I'd like to give him the time to do it. I believe that's what he's requested to us today. The things, you could have a convenience store today that turns out on 20th. You could have a package store. I mean, we saw the list from Ms. Sager. I mean, understood. Anyway, what I was trying to do is justify the reason for my motion. For those reasons, I'll, I make the motion to postpone.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill, Mr. McBrayer. And again, council, just for purposes of this, we're discussing the motion to postpone.
Yes, I think we've probably discussed this almost to death already. We've had so many meetings with the planning and zoning. We've had opportunities to look at those proposals time and time again with every iteration of it. It was news to me right before we walked out here that Mr. Payne is now, I guess, the developer for this project, but by his own admission, he did not indicate that any changes could really be made, so I don't know what we would be postponing this for, what we would expect to hear that would be any different than what we've heard, so I would vote against postponing this. I think we need to go ahead and wrap this up.
Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
A little bit of a human touch on this. My mother died on Sunday, but here I am. I'm here because I came to vote, and putting this off, no, we need to get this done. I understand, I, you know, I appreciate these folks, but we need to get this done. I have not wasted these hours that I could have been with my family to postpone this.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Any other discussion on Mr. Massengill's motion to postpone? Ms. Joy.
Opposed postponing, we need to have a vote. If, in fact, the new developer who got into it this morning has another proposal, he can come back in one year and present that, is my understanding, that if we deny it, he has to sit out for a year. That would give them plenty of time to get with the group and to further develop plans, which clearly need some work.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Mr. Weaver?
Mayor and council, I just wanted to clarify that if the council today disapproves the merits of it, should you choose not to postpone it, because the PNC approved it, the one-year waiting period would not apply. It only applies if both bodies have disapproved it. I just want to clarify that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Weaver. All right, any further discussion on the motion to postpone to date certain of 3/21 of 2023? All right, can we get the voting up? Just pause, Jimmy. For these next two votes, I'm going to go ahead and use, or release this point. We'll see when the next one will use this. So we'll be voting, all those in favor of postponement to 3/21, you may hit yes, and those no will be no. All right, motion fails 5-2. So we will next move, is there a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.3? Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Again, Jimmy, if you'll have that available. All of those in favor of approval of Agenda Item 6.3? Yes, it's now reset. You may vote this time. All right, motion fails 5-2. All right, next, we will move to Agenda Item 6.5, which is a resolution considering the notice. All right, council, folks, we still have business to take care and to attend. If you please remember, we still have three more agenda items to handle. You're welcome to get up and leave at this time if your item is over with, but we will continue to move forward with 6, 5, 6, 6, and 6.7. All right, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Sager, on Agenda Item 6.5.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 6.5 is a resolution prescribing the type of notice to be given for a joint meeting.
Again, I'm going to ask that comments be kept in the gallery and also for comments to be handled outside in the gallery and outside in the foyer. Thank you.
Item 6.5 is a resolution prescribing the type of notice to be given for a joint hearing between the City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing to consider the proposed Unified Development Code. Just as the reason as why we are bringing this before you, we would be required to mail notice to every property owner within the City of Lubbock, including those within 200 feet of the property, to give proper notice because every zoning district will change, because the zoning districts are changing in the Unified Development Code. Or by two-thirds vote of the governing body, five of the seven council members, you can vote to prescribe the type of notice, an alternative notice, to be given with advertising the time and place of the joint public hearing. The documents included in your packet include the resolution adopting the alternative notification, the notice itself of the public hearing, and the public hearing notice plan. That plan includes several different types of notification that take place over three weeks, March 1st through March 21st. It includes social media, newspaper legal notice, advertising on the city's public access channel, utility bills insert, advertising on our website, direct mail to neighborhood associations, hard copy of the UDC if anyone elect to come to Citizens Tower to review it. This is the timeline we are looking at. On Tuesday, February 14th, we met with you to review a sample notice and proposed resolution. Today, we are bringing the resolution forward, asking for the two-thirds vote for approval. If approved, we'll launch the advertising campaign tomorrow, Wednesday, March 1st, hold the joint public hearing the morning of Wednesday, March 22nd at 8:30. We are looking to reserve the next day if there is a need to recess and reconvene the next day. Tuesday, April 11th, at your regular meeting, hold the second reading of the ordinance to adopt the UDC, if approved, on March 22nd or 23rd. Our contract with our consultant, KKC, expires April 28th, and looking at a possible effective date of July 1st, or sometime in July, so you give an 80 to 90-day period between adoption and effective date. And I would be pleased to answer any questions.
All right, any questions of Ms. Sager on Agenda Item 6.5? Seeing none, could I entertain a motion to approve 6.? Thank you, Mr. Massengill, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Ready? All in favor of approval of 6.5, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed by like sign? All right, motion carries 7-0. We will next move to 6.6. I think we can kind of carry 6.6 and 6.7 are very similar, Joel. We will turn it over to you for these next two and final two agenda items.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to revisit 6.3 if you don't mind. No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. I wouldn't do that to anybody.
Objection.
Cancelled. I'm fired? What do you mean I'm fired? So this is going to be a year of more historic first for Lubbock Power and Light as we continue to navigate our way into entering ERCOT at 100% of our customers, but also bringing all these customers into the retail market, hopefully by the end of the year, if we can satisfy all the regulatory requirements. Everything else is pretty much on track. So I'm really proud to be able to announce today that we've conducted an RFP, and we were looking for a couple of entities that were not only required to have, but the market requires it and they need it. And this is the designation of Polar Provider of Last Resort and the voluntary retail electric providers. These are all choices of large service providers that are in the retail Texas market. They're capable of taking large tranches of customers all at once, and they've got, over the last 20 years, all these good market participants have found a way to have market-based solutions for many things, including transitioning large amounts of customers. So if an existing retail electric provider in this new market is to go default and they cannot serve these customers any longer, then you have the Polar and the V reps, not necessarily in that order, who can pick those customers up? And the provider of last resort is just that. So they are set up with the ability to charge a higher rate to these customers because they have no idea how many customers they're going to be taking, and they're managing a significant amount of risk in order to do that. So the idea is a customer that would be forced to have to make a transition like that would go either to a voluntary rep at market-based rates. Voluntary reps can say, "I'm only going to take 1,000 or 5,000 or a certain amount of customers." And then, but they would charge market-based rates. The provider of last resort would be significantly higher, but the customers would land there and then immediately try to pick another retail electric provider. So that's how this whole process works. Under Felix Orta's strict disciplined hand, we ran a pretty good RFP, and we had a good group on the selection committee, Harvey Hall, Bill Howerton, Ashley Bush out of our business office, and then our former board member and board chair, Greg Taylor, participated on this as well because he was there for a whole lot of this coming to fruition. And I have a couple of folks with me in the audience here today. So on 6.6, Mayor and council, this is a resolution that would be designating Reliant Energy, Octopus Energy, and TXU Energy as default retail electric providers and voluntary retail electric providers. The default is going to live about 90 days beyond the market entry, and it's just going to go away as a designation. So if any customer does not choose, they're going to land with very reputable people, companies, I will say, and they won't have to worry about their rates, and they won't have to worry about scams and things like that. So if they just choose not to So if they just choose not to choose, they're going to land in a really good spot. And we're really proud and thankful that these folks participated in this, in this RFP. So what we're looking for is just the approval of the, this designation of these organizations and to complete the agreement, and have these guys sign on with us. And this is just one of those benchmark steps this year that we're looking to get totally completed. They're here, if you had any questions for them or anything, they said they would face the firing line and, and take the questions if you had them.
Thank you, Mr. Ivey. Is that all that you have presentation-wise on 6.6 and 6.7?
6.7 is very similar, except that we're looking to designate Reliant Energy as the Polar, so they will be the sole Polar Provider in the service territory.
It's my understanding that this is already voted on by our meeting.
By the board, that's correct.
All right. Ms. Joy, you have a question for Mr. Ivey?
Even if they go with the default, or V-reps, or Polar, they still, whatever, whatever plan they choose or end up in, they can still move to another plan, correct?
In this, in this initial designation, yes.
Okay, and that's what a lot of people are worried about.
Right, and so, RFPs generally can, can offer one, two, three-year contracts, that kind of thing. Everybody's free to choose their own when it comes to that. But this initial designation, the D-reps, for example, if somebody chooses not to choose, they land with a D-rep, they can choose somebody else that they want. At the same time, these folks can market to those folks and try to keep them, which I would expect would happen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Any other questions of Mr. Ivey? Mr. Massengill?
I would just make a comment, thank you, Mayor, that this is, this is a big box to check as we move into retail competition. We've talked about this, prior council talked about this for years, and so hats off to you and your staff, Mr. Ivey, this is a big deal. And I would, we won't spend much time on this, but I would encourage our ratepayers to begin learning, read up, because it's coming.
To that end, you will see a lot more advertisement over the next several months. It's going to really increase and reach a crescendo, probably April, May timeframe. And it's going to be good for all the customers to be seeing that.
Any other questions or comments on 6.6 or 6.7? Does council have any objection to taking those both in one vote? All right, I have a motion, would I, I would entertain a motion to approve agenda item 6.6 and 6.7? Thank you, Ms. Joy, and a second, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. All in favor of approval of 6.6 and 6.7, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? All right, 6.6 and 6.7 carries 7-0. With that, it is 4:28 on Tuesday, February 28th, and we are adjourned.